All right, wonderful. Well, this meeting of the Community Advisory Board will will come to order. It's Thursday, September 24th. We will begin this meeting. This is a special meeting called slightly out of order from our regular monthly meeting to consider a couple of items tonight, but we do have community comments.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Wood and members of the board. Appreciate all of you joining in this evening. I did notice Ms. Ms. Cheveria just joined us as well, so thank you very much. We did have one community comment. If you don't mind, I will take a little bit of executive privilege to share one celebration. You know, it's just not in me not to have a celebration, and this one's a pretty big one. Today, Jefferson Elementary was named a Blue Ribbon School, is one of only five in the entire state. Out of eleven hundred and two public schools within the state of Arkansas, we had one of those five, and it was at Jefferson Elementary. So, big congratulations to the entire Jefferson community, the staff, the students, the parents, and of course, their fireplug, their fireball, Ms. Register, the principal, who, when that job opened up, she basically gave me an ultimatum that said, "You better move me to Jefferson. This is where I want to end my career." Because she had taught there for fourteen years, and she also told me, "You move me there, you're gonna have a Blue Ribbon School. I promise you." And that was her goal, and she worked with her team, and she accomplished that today, and we had a great celebration up there. So, thank you for allowing me that that chance just to share something that really was special for the Little Rock School District. And of course, we know this comes on the heels of just not too long ago, Roberts Elementary was named a Blue Ribbon School. We know that Forest Park has that as a part of their background. So, we have multiple schools, some a little bit farther back that have been Blue Ribbon, and so it's a very exciting moment for Little Rock School District. Our comment today came from a parent, and I will read this because it's the only comment, and I think it has a lot of topics that end up being things that we have discussed over the last several months related to our delivery of instruction, as well as our how we we respond to COVID issues. This is from Ms. Julia Taylor, and she submitted this today. It says, "I don't feel the district is being forthcoming with COVID numbers. I found out through local news if a school has had to close. The district does post on their website daily numbers, but not cumulative. If a school has to close, that is worthy of an email or a call to all parents in the district. It would be help also be helpful if individual schools gave at least a weekly report to parents on COVID numbers. Lots of rumors flying, and I would prefer to hear from the officials. It is hard to make a decision about further instruction without good information. I also want to express my concern for the teachers. This is scary. They are exhausted and are having twice as much work. Apparently, quite a few are sick already and don't have subs. Maybe it is time to rethink this decision. Virtual is certainly challenging, and more so for some students who don't have the technology. I know a great effort was made. Perhaps we need to focus on this for now until numbers in Arkansas drop. I think various organizations, businesses, and volunteers would pull together to help kids all get online." And that was from, again, Ms. Julia Taylor. As is our custom, we don't respond to to that, but I I will follow up with Ms. Taylor personally, just so that you all know, because there are some things that we do in fact do, and I can share where those can be found, and there are other suggestions that we probably need to look deeper at.
Okay. Very good. She makes some good points. A timely topic. Okay, so the next item on the agenda then is the the second reading of the the section, the proposed Section Eight regarding classified personnel. So, Mr. Walker is on here?
Yeah, Mr. Walker is. Let me just lead into this, and especially where Ms. Mourning is new. I just want to reiterate our our approach on policy. We always have to have two readings unless the board has a vote that that suggests that they just want to do one reading, which I think that's only happened once since I've arrived. In the second reading, it doesn't mean that we have to make a decision today, but it does give you the opportunity to take action. You also could ask for a continued revision, or even to say you need more time to think about it, I suppose. And that has occurred. We have had policies that have stretched out over five or six months. This is personnel policy. You, I believe you did hear from the classified group, Classified PPC, which this policy pertains to in our previous week. So, I'll turn it over to Mr. Walker to lead us through where we're at.
Good evening. I know we talked about a lot of this last week, but just to kind of reiterate, these what's been presented to you are revisions to Section Eight. They're the most recent revisions released by the Arkansas School Board Association, as well as revisions from the previous year. We combined those into into just this month, and the PPC has reviewed all of these. They have voted unanimously for it. I will note in the document specifically Section 8.4 and 8.38, the PPC recommended some changes that better reflect the way the LRSDA operates. 8.38 is the vacation time calculation and how that's done. That is noted in purple, and then there's a highlight that notes that the district administration approves of the change. And so, I don't believe that there's anything controversial. The rewrites, as I noted last week, a lot of them have to do with the new Title IX regulations that went into effect on August 14th, and that just kind of redefines sexual harassment that we have to comply with. And so, in a few of those sections, that's the reason for those those modifications, but they're recommended by the ASBA, approved by the PPC. And unless there are questions, they, you're well happy to answer any questions if I can, and if there's any discussion, we're also, I guess, ready for action on this item.
Okay, Mr. Walker, when did the PPC add the the purple language that you referred to?
At their meeting, I think that was two weeks ago. It was the week before the the regularly scheduled cat meeting.
Okay.
And Ms. Easton spoke to that on on last week.
Okay. Okay, I I have no no further questions or comments. Any members of the board have a question or a comment regarding this proposed proposed portion of Section Eight?
No question. Thank you.
Oh, well, I had something just for more clarity. I don't I've been able to read it, but on 8.19, where when an employee, in any instance, they may want to file a grievance. I know it's been marked out that they can have, from what I'm reading, it's implied that they can have any representative they want, that they don't have to have an LREA member necessarily to represent them when they file a grievance. So, I just wanted to see what other, when you say representative, like, who can they have to represent them, and will that be made clearer? Or will the option to still have an LREA member be available to them?
Yes, yes, to answer your question. They can have anyone of their choosing. The previous way that the grievance policy, both in Section Eight and this section, and Section Three, which is the license section, was language that was in the professionally negotiated agreement. And when that was, when that expired, we changed the language of the policy to reflect that they can have any representative they're choosing. So, they can have an LREA representative if they so choose. They can have an attorney. They can have a member of the community. I know that there have been times a member of organizations like the NAACP and and other organizations have represented employees in in hearings and in personnel matters. So, so they can have anyone of their choosing ultimately.
Okay. Thank you.
Good question. Any other questions, members of the board?
No question. Thank you.
Okay.
No questions.
Okay. Now, here, here. What was that?
No questions. I'm sorry. I didn't know if you saw pitch.
No. Hi, Dr. Jones. Okay, well, no no more questions or or discussion then, is there? I thought or now would be an appropriate time for a motion from a member of the board?
So, I move that we accept the the document with the proposed changes as outlined.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second then. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, then we'll go to a vote. All those in favor of the motion to adopt the proposed changes to Section Eight, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no? Okay, then that motion will pass, and those changes will be recommended to the commissioner for him to adopt on behalf of the Little Rock School District. Okay, Mr. Poor, then the the next item on this agenda is the budget.
Yes, thank you. And, you know, obviously, this has been an unusual year in in many ways. I guess the constant that we have is we've got a great finance officer in Kelsey Bailey that helps lead us through packaging all this to try to deliver a budget that that meets our priorities and keeps us out of any kind of hot water in terms of not putting ourselves into a financial issue that is problematic. Obviously, Mr. Bailey gets a lot of help from his team, but also from our principals and our directors. And so, a budget coming together takes a lot of folks. This year, it took even more because we had so many different technical issues. The state's e-finance system was down for at least three days, and Mr. Bailey may tell you was longer than that. So, we had that as a challenge right when he was trying to, you know, kind of complete the task and get it to you. So, we had that. The other thing that I I think everyone understands is the dynamics of of the pandemic has really changed everything from property tax collection to expenditures and to things that we're thinking about for this coming year. I talked to a fellow superintendent today, actually talked to two, and they both said it was really a weird situation as their boards looked at their budget, because there were so many unknowns. They never felt like there were this many unknowns. So, our staff and you as board members are in a similar situation to others across this country right now because of where the pandemic is. And again, it kind of goes back into a trust factor with Mr. Bailey of, you know, him coming forward with and sharing as many variables as he possibly can. We want you to ask as many questions as you possibly can. I'm gonna try to help monitor any chat, so if there's a question, I can make sure that Mr. Bailey knows that you're ready to ask, and and but also, if you need to interrupt, please do that as well. And if if it's all right, I'll go ahead and turn this over to Kelsey right now.
Good evening, board members, the public that's watching there. At any time, if my audio or something kind of fades out, give me a thumbs up or do some wave and let me know. Been having a few connectivity issues over here, but I'm sharing my screen now. Are you all, can you all see my screen okay? And we kind of named this uncharted waters because of the pandemic, not that it's uncharted from a financial aspect, but many of the things we we can't really see and predict right now with COVID and and things to come in this fall and and maybe late late winter. So, but wanted to go through this. It's gonna probably be a kind of lengthy presentation, more so than my normal monthly budget things. But want to go through this PowerPoint within. This is pretty much the focus of my area here. So, this is kind of our focus statement that we have. We have the district's responsibility to be great stewards of the resources that we have available, doing so we can provide our children, students with the greatest educational opportunities to ensure they achieve their maximum potential. So, this is what my department strives to do on a yearly, on a monthly, daily basis with all the internal controls and every step we put in place as far as resource allocation. And you can stop me at any time you have any question about anything, but I want to go through this preliminary before we actually get into the actual budget part. So, these are some of the factors that we we consider when we're looking at our budget. Of course, we're gonna look at our previous fiscal year and results, kind of looked at that last week. I'll highlight some of those later on. Enrollment projections along with current student counts, you know, that's very important based on staff and current and future economic conditions. So, the major conditions
Kelsey, I think Kelsey, you're cutting out.
Enjoyed if our actual, you know, money comes from. Okay, am I back? Maybe?
Yeah, maybe. I can see you blinking, so that's a good sign.
All right. I'm gonna pause one second. Had set up in another office where was another AP, but we were getting a little bit of feedback. So, hopefully, hopefully, it'll stay solid with us.
Kelsey, I think the la- the last thing that I heard real clearly from you, what you were just getting into, current and future economic conditions.
Okay, so the current and future economic condition, of course, are a major, our tax assessment. So, you, we're looking at, you know, different things with COVID. It's a little bit different on kind of judging that for this year. But, you know, we had some appeals. We talked about tax appeals in the past. But the tax assessment, we'll look at it a little bit later. It seems to have some growth there. But the tax assessment is just a snapshot of what the potential is for our tax revenue. It didn't tell you who's going to actually pay and who's not at that point. So, we do our best looking on historical figures out there. School structure, we look at, you know, staff and their school improvement requirements or initiative. Of course, employee salaries and benefits are a major part of our actual plan with minimum wage. We know that's gonna go up to $11 effective 1/121. So, those things. ATRS is Arkansas Teacher Retirement. It went up a quarter percent this year. Another things we're looking at, of course, if we had another initiative from the board, Superintendent Department Administration. And the biggest, one of the bigger ones down here, COVID-19, not really knowing what the realities are, what we're kind of dealing with now, that may include additional sub costs or reduced revenues in child nutrition or additional PPE costs and things like that. So, these are the budgetary factors. We look at state standard staffing formula into that change. We have major textbooks adoption last year was a major year, so we spent, one our record, it was about 4.3 million. We're gonna be around to 2 million, 2.2 million this year, so that was good. Child nutrition is a big thing, a big topic in a lot of schools right now because the programs are typically serving maybe 10 to 15% of what they would typically serve. Maybe maybe some of more, but child nutrition unit is a self-sufficient program. Their goal is always to be in the black every year. If you're not in the black, it comes out of operation. That's what a lot of districts actually have to contribute money from the operation. We've been fortunate over, I think, over the last 11 years, maybe one year, we had to contribute 150,000, which is not much for a $14 million operation. That was because of equipment purchases. So, that's something we're really looking at in the feeding programs in this period of time. Another big one, facilitation improvements. Of course, you all know we did a second lien financing a few years back. That money has been exhausted with all the projects we've actually done with opening up Southwest High. We're up for next month or, yeah, November, bond refunding debt service mill extension. So, that's something we gotta consider and, you know, budgeting at that point once we actually, if that passes and we actually sell those bonds, and other legislative acts that may come into play. This is just a kind of highlight of where we are right now for our fiscal year 2021 property assessment. And for those that may not be aware, our fiscal year runs from July 1st of a year through June 30th of the following year. So, July 1st through June 30th, that's what our fiscal years. So, our property is basically assessed at 20% of the market value, the market value that the asset has appraised the value yet. So, for 2019, Karen, in Arkansas, you always pay your taxes a year behind. So, for 2019, taxes became payable, believed a lot of part of March, early April, when they opened the books up. So, money we're getting in for in 2020 actually from a 2019 assessment. So, our assessed values for Little Rock is 3.9 billion dollars. So, it's up from last year about 3 and 1/4%, and you can see the breakdown on how that actually makes up. So, real estate property makes up 2.9 of billion of that. Personal property includes boats, airplanes, cars, motorcycles, things like that, and utilities and public service property makes up a small smaller portion. When we're talking about a mill, basically, the mill is 1/10 of 1 cent. So, if you wanted to multiply it, you would take 0.001 times that actual assessment rate to actually produce what a mill actually is gonna produce in Little Rock. So, if you had $100,000 house at market value, it would be assessed at 20%, which that would give you a $20,000 assessed value. So, if we were doing that times that $100,000, that's $20,000 assessed, and that's $20 per assessment. And Little Rock has 46.4 mills. So, you had a 100, a house worth $100,000 assessed at $20,000, Little Rock milage rate, you'd be paying 928 that actually goes to, of course, Little Rock School District. So, based on the levy down here, the one mill basically produces in a perfect environment about 3.9 million. But that's considered a 100% collection. We typically have egg collections ranging from 96 to to about 98% in a given year. We'll show some of that a little bit later as well. But this is basically how milage rate is broken up. We have 32 mills that are dedicated for maintenance and operation. That's just the operation of the school. That's your salaries, utilities, and, you know, books and supplies. We have 12.4 mills that are for debt service, and that's to pay off any existing debt, make your debt service payments, and any excess that actually goes toward your operation as well. We also have two mills that are dedicated for maintenance and operation for capital outlay and technology. So, we split those up. So, one mill actually goes purely for capital improvements, and one mill goes toward technology upgrades, refreshing computers. Any questions so far? So, our local revenue, this is basically a breakdown of our local revenue, and it's gonna be on another slide as well on another spreadsheet before. So, but basically, we're projecting about 168 million coming in the district this year and is broken out by these different categories of property taxes. Then various categories. So, you have your current taxes, which are broken up by July through December and January through June there. You have your, just mean, people are paying their taxes that are late. I'm getting a thing about the internet unstable. Y'all still good with me? Still good? Okay. Excess treasury fees and depository interest, all these are related to our property taxes that we we get in and investments on those. So, when we're looking at our state revenue, our projection for this year is gonna be about 82 million. And basically, these are the breakdown of the different categories out there. I sent sent out a document earlier that had a little more narrative out there. So, when we're looking at our foundation for funding, this is funding that the state gives every district. And a lot of times, we'll hear about the the foundation amount. This year, $7,018 per student. And some of that foundation amount is made up of our local revenue, and we'll get into that a little bit more. But just wanted to give you kind of a highlight before we jump into our spreadsheets and different other things. So, we get a quite a bit from state grants and magnet funding. That's gonna be adjusted later on in this year, once we get our National Board certified amounts out there. They changed that this past fiscal year where the state portion actually comes to the district, and the district actually hasn't paid for that National Board stipend for the teachers in addition to the one we pay, but they reimburse us 100% for that. Let's see. Any questions about any of those funding sources so far? So, pretty much, a decline in enrollment funding, that means that we had a decline in enrollment from the previous year versus the the current year. Alternative learning environment typically, that's mostly goes to it like a Hamilton Learning Facility, English Language Learners, those that may not be proficient in English. ESA used to be called NSL, National School Lunch Act, but it's called Enhanced Student Achievement now. It's based on your free and reduced population. Those are supplemental funds that typically apply to school program, pre-K programs, different at-risk programs that we have in the district, professional development, of course, vocational. Exceptional Children is actually our state funding, so it's actually called exceptional children. We may hear us refer to it as state of special ed. ABC Arkansas Better Chance is our early childhood state portion. We also get another TANAP portion, Transitional Assistance for Needed Family, which that makes up about 77% federal portion of that adult education, of course. So, breaking out how our state revenue is actually derived, so foundation funding, like I said, is 7,018. State aid per student is based on what's called a 3/4 ADM. ADM is Average Daily Membership. So, you look at your your first 3/4 of your year and see your actual student enrollment for that period of time, and they actually average that. And so, our 3/4 averaging is based on your previous fiscal year. So, for last year, our 3/4 average was 21,308. It excludes any pre-K. So, it's K through 12 to get that average out there. So, but this year, we're expecting a little over $52 million coming in that 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 funding source. ALE is based on 40, 4,700 per student identified. So, for last year, we had 153, almost 154 students identified for, you know, making up for 722,000 for this upcoming year by English Language Learners, 352 per student. Approximately about 3,000 students. That may go up a little bit and may go down, but that's based on our projection now. It's gonna be based on our current year identified students. Enhanced Student Achievement is currently, we're at over 70%, so our current per student amount is 1,051. We had identified 15, a little over 15,000, for a total of 15.8. We also have something called ESA matching. And basically, if you utilize your your regular ESA fund for after, before and after school or tutors and early childhood, they actually give you additional money for that. So, for this upcoming year, we're expecting another 675,000. And it can only be used for before and after school programs. That's what that slash means. And for tutors and for early childhood, we also have professional development, and this is derived based on your ADM as well, $36. These are just other state revenues we have here. Based on our federal revenue, we have quite a bit of federal revenue coming in. It actually increased this year because of our, the CARES Act money that we're getting in for PPE and different things and technology. So, we're up to about 44 and 1/2 million, but these are the major categories in our federal programs. We have Title I, it's supplemental funded, it's poverty-based, so those are things that can't replace what you're required to do by state standards. So, it supplements those things like for additional before and after school programs or tutors and different things like that that a school may be writing in their plan. We have Title II, it's basically an extension of PD, it's improving teacher quality. We have our Title III, and this English Language Acquisition is similar to our ELL from our state funding. We have our Title IV, Student Support and Academic Enrichment. Those are four programs that we, that's what it says, pretty much, Student Support and Academic Enrichment. So, all these federal programs are to support, not supplant, it doesn't replace your your current funds or your activities are, but it goes in to support those. Title VI, I sped in early childhood part, and we talked a little bit about TANAP earlier. That's our early childhood. You can see the other ones, some smaller ones, the Carl Perkins and Student Achievement, Student Improvement Grants and our Medicaid. And the one I said was added was called HERS as a CARES funding. So, when we're looking at actually how we actually fund our schools, and this is just the funding that the schools have the autonomy to allocate, so their schools are not responsible for their actual salaries out there because they don't know where the person is gonna be placed on the salary scale. But we do allocation for them to buy their normal operating supplies, and this is how they're spaced on a per pupil. So, we look at the previous year, October 1 enrollment, give them a preliminary allotment out there, and we true it up based on their current year, October enrollment. So, October 1st is actually what's called Cycle 2, and that's when their official enrollment actually goes into our Cycle 2 and goes to the state. So, for early childhood, we allocate $100 per student. Typically, they have more consumables. That's why they get a little bit more. Elementary has a little bit less consumables. We allocate 95 per student on on them in middle school and high school, 85. High schools actually get additional $20 per ninth graders for PSAT testing and along with any programs they may have in place for that. All schools get additional $20 per student for, that's for your, for pre-K through 12 for library, to help replenish their library materials. And we also have something called Act 1573. So, all K6 teachers actually get additional allocation for $500 that are used for consumables. So, they can go online and buy stuff or get reimbursed. So, we load up $500 in an account called Class Wallet, and they can order things for their classroom. So, that's a strict allocation just for the teachers. So, it didn't come out of the school budget at all. So, every K through sixth grade teacher actually has an allocation. A lot of teachers are ordering PPE stuff this year or cleaning stuff and different other things to help supplement some of those things in their classroom. A lot of teachers are ordering PPE stuff this year or cleaning stuff and different other things to help supplement some of those things in their classroom. Uh, in addition to those funding, uh, the secondary schools, middle schools get two thousand for journalism, high schools get another four thousand. And these are some other, other funding sources that may be, uh, in their schools as well. They have title one if they qualify for. And another subset of title one is called ten, ten oh three A, which is a school improvement, uh, funding source. Uh, they also.
I interrupt you right there, Kelsey?
Yes, sir.
I, I'm hoping that that was a good spot for me to jump in. I hope that.
Jump in.
Board members, uh, is a reminder in our, our community as well that when you start to package a board, uh, budget, there are things that just automatically almost start to get filled in, as you can see, from these funding sources that come from a variety of different buckets. And, you know, i- in some ways it's, it's not rocket science because it is what it is. There, there, there's very little variable. It's then how you utilize those resources with inside the budget that, that really mattered to get the impact. But for Kelsey in particular, he's got these funding streams and he's got to go manage them. And they're very prescriptive in terms of where funds need to go. And then he and others then have to monitor it to make sure we spend within the parameters of that funding mechanism. And I just wanted to add that in. Kelsey is just a little reinforcement to your, your presentation right here.
We have very, very little flexibility typically in the budget. Uh, the only flexibility we typically have is in the springtime if you decide that you're going to reduce staff down. So districts don't have the ability to produce additional revenue because we can't really go out and sell anything. You're depending on your tax base and, and income coming in. But when you're looking at a school like ESA maybe use to fund early childhood. We have an ABC funding down there, but in case that enough ABC funding doesn't come in, we can use some of that ESA actually fund that. The same thing with ALE. We typically have millions of dollars of ALE expenditures, but we only are getting about seven hundred and twenty two thousand. So we have to use some of that ESA funding and actually cover the additional costs in those areas. And that'll be a little bit evident a little bit later. But later on, when we, we get into major, I guess, uh, financial statements and different things, if you ever want to see it, it's just FYI here. So these are all the elements, what we actually have to look at. And some of the things that changed this year, what's called functions, uh, and actual, uh, account code. So every expenditure has its whole line here and this line tells us something about the expenditure. So if we were looking at the first four digits, we could tell that the one stands for a teacher salary fund. The two eighty one tells me that it's ESA funding. Eleven oh five, I mean, it's a whole thick kind of, we call it our financial bible. Uh, eleven, eleven oh five tells us it's early childhood, zero eighty tells us it's a God spring, zero five tells us for early childhood again. And the sixty one, uh, one ten tells us it was for a salary account. So, I mean, every expenditure has that, that same code now there. So that's what takes the budget so long, because when they change different function codes, if you have somebody coded to that function code last year and they no longer allow them that, or they're giving a limitation on account code, you have to go out there and change all those things and, and recast it, so.
Can I jump in again on this one? Uh, members of the board, this is one of those ones also that it's important because you may say, well, he's maybe the only one that understands these numbers. But if you start, the, the longer you spend with the budget, and this is probably for even some of our prospective, uh, people that will be on the board, like Ms. Mourning and Mr. Mason and Mr. Woods running, that the longer you stay with this, the more you start to understand that string. And you actually then can actually do comparison data amongst other districts. So you could compare some of the, the funding streams of how much we spend on second language students with what Springdale does. And so there's, there is a, a reason for this funding code, even though it seems complex. And you may say, well, it, it kills these old ones, those are darn numbers. No, um, when you, it, it can't even be you, but it, it takes a minute to get there. And it's also whenever you get to a point where you say, this doesn't make sense, or, um, here's something I'd like to explore during the course of the year. We can actually really narrow down things of where we, we use our, our resources. Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
And it, it takes a, a good little while to get used to all these different funding sources and pieces out there. So I know a lot of this may be overwhelming, but I'm going to give you kind of highlight of, you know, the kind of area that we're looking at. So, uh, I know it, it's stuff we learn every year and I've been here eleven years, so it's totally different. So we have different funds that we operate in. We have, I, I just go through these fairly quickly. Our teacher salary fund, which we pay all our teacher salary certified, uh, salaries out of our operational fund, which are classified employees like myself. And we pay for our normal expenses. We have what's called a building bond. That's where all our, uh, actual bond funds go, a debt service fund. We actually transfer money into that to actually make our debt service payment. We have what's called a capital outlay, a fund number five, and that's our dedicated maintenance operation. If you remember those two mills we talked about earlier, federal grants, all federal grants start with a six. So their fund six and what we have called activity funds, those are school funds set at school. So if you have like a band booster club or any kind of, uh, athletic, uh, events or cheer clubs and different things, those are in activity funds. Those are fundraisers that the schools typically have. We have fun eight, which is our food service fund, their independent, uh, enterprise operation. So like we said, they're supposed to, uh, be self-sufficient, you know, we have fun now, which is our asset fund. And I'm going to jump out of that presentation real quick unless, have y'all have any questions so far? So one. Okay. We covered this briefly last week, but want to touch on it again. So Stevens, Inc. is actually our financial advisor and they, they handle our, uh, actual bond sales and different things for us. Our, in our annual, uh, submissions we have to do for our bond holders as well. But they put this together for us every year. So this shows, uh, a five-year assessment history here of Little Rock. Uh, and you can see we had a five-year growth of two point, almost two point seven percent, which is pretty good on those, those years. So, uh, we've had some years upwards of seven percent. I can show that a little bit later, but if we scroll through this, it shows our debt, what we have outstanding in our debt. Getting to the bottom of that, uh, let's see here. So outstanding debt is about six point six percent of our, our total assessment. So it's fairly low, so total outstanding debt is about two hundred and fifty three million right now. I wanted to get down to a few more things here. So if we're looking at our debt service mills, what we're paying now, this is our actual schedule. Revenue's coming in and kind of, like I said, on those surplus, those surplus is actually used for operation in the district. Uh, we talked about what we're, uh, putting out for voters on. November third is basically extending our debt out eighteen years where our debt service payment stays the same, but with the ability to raise two hundred million plus for capital improvements. But our debt service would still be around the twenty one point three million dollar range, so.
Yes, I got a question on that.
Yes, sir.
Uh, so, you know, we are, we are supporting that it passes. The, what happens if it doesn't pass? What, what's the, what's plan B?
You're going to have a hard job as a board member.
Oh, Lord.
So, uh, our buildings are, you know, sixty five to seventy years old on the average. So we have a lot of needs.
I know.
Yeah. So it's, it's going to be a hard, it's going to be a hard one. I have to scratch my head on that one, uh, based on the needs we have in the district. So, uh, those needs never go away, even when we tried before, we were able to do a second lien. So that may be something we have to kind of explore as, as a board. We just have, as a, a, administration and board, we just have to sit down and, you know, get additional game plans together.
Well, uh, hopefully it'll pass, but I'm just thinking plan B, C, D, E.
Yeah. So, so we've started and I'll show you another document once I get out of here. Where over the past ten years, we refunded all the bonds we could refund for lower interest rates. And we've saved upwards between twenty seven and thirty million dollars, which went toward that. We've actually did performance service contracts that help with energy efficient programs, uh, that was about thirteen million. Think the savings on that has been about two million with all the mechanical and things we have, we actually able to do on that. Uh, and plus we did the second lien, which you can always do second lien, but that increases your bond, your debt service payment. And you don't get the same bang for your buck as this, so. But there are some options out there, so we're always going to have some options. We just have to discuss them. So I'm hopeful that, uh, we'll see favorable results November third. Wanted to highlight this, we talked about our collection rate earlier, and this is a highlight here for two thousand. Uh, I thought I had another one up here, let's see. Uh, let's see. I might have actually pulled the wrong one. Uh, but, but for our collection, if you look over this time, we typically average about ninety eight, ninety six percent. I think I actually pulled, uh, another one, uh, but for collections for nineteen, twenty, there were about ninety six point five percent, which is lower than, you know, in the past. So, and that's going to be, that was reflected when we did our year-end financial statements where our, our actual tax revenue was down about four million dollars. I'm going to go to that one as well. Now I'll show you some of these bond refunding here. So like I talked about some of our other plans in the past, use a lot of bonds. And this was the, the last savings I had, about twenty eight million that we did from previous bond, just refunding. That's just refinancing bonds, that wasn't an issue in additional, so. This is a pretty important, uh, spreadsheet here that keep up with, to see the, the tax, how taxes have gone. So we've had some years, if you can look over here, where tax appreciation assessments hadn't been that great. We actually had one year of negative there where it actually went down. And well, and another year there. So then we had a three percent growth. Prior to that, we were looking at a six and seven percent before the bubble kind of bust with the real estate market. Uh, but over the past, you, you've noticed, you know, we've had a five percent, three point six last year and this year, three and a quarter. Basically that equates to, if we're looking at potential tax revenue from last year versus this year, additional about five point eight million dollars. If, uh, collections came in as expected. But the things on this spreadsheet that are important for us, we look at our foundation, uh, funding here. And, and this is what's called a three quarter ADM over the past year. You can see we've had some declines and this is from last year. So there's some major declines right here and we had to do some major budget cuts during that time. Last year we were, for the previous year, we were down a hundred and seventy two. So it did reduce the amount of foundation funding we're getting from the state about almost one point eight million dollars. The previous year was five million. But we kind of take all those things in consideration when we're looking at that. So we get that third quarter average, uh, around April or so. So we can kind of judge on what our upcoming year is going to look like as far as foundation fund. Go down to one more spreadsheet on here before I jump back over something. We talked about ESA funding as well, so we strive to get as accurate numbers as we can for our free and reduced meal applications out there. So it produces quite a bit of revenue for the district that we utilize for our early childhood program, our ALE program, a sped program, many after school and before school programs, our summer programs, uh, things like city year, career coaches and different at-risk programs that we have around the district. So that's where that funding actually goes toward. Uh, but when the, we had less, people actually fill out applications last year. So we had a reduction of, uh, students identified going from fifteen four eighty eight down to fifteen fifty five, which was a reduction of four hundred and thirty three, uh, actual students. So reduction of four hundred and fifty five thousand. So we've really done a, a big push this year to make sure families are doing their due diligence to go out there and fill out those meal applications for us. So we can get accurate accounts out there. So these numbers for child nutrition actually matriculate and actually calculate for, uh, title one and any competitive grants and things like that as well. So it's not only just ESA or just for child nutrition, but it goes in title one and other competitive grants too, so.
Do we know where we are on getting those returns this year? What, what percentage we're at, where we need to be and what the deadline is?
I talked to, uh, Ms. Walker Heinz, the director of child nutrition today, and she said the numbers looked pretty good. So, uh, actually she was thinking they were, based on the current numbers, about seventy five to seventy six percent. Uh, so we were getting a lot of principal pushing because we had a few schools that lost their title one funding this year, so.
Yeah.
And, and that, that's significant, so. Do we need to pause for any questions? I hadn't looked at the chat. Good?
Nothing on the chat, uh, maybe just a, a couple of questions that are easy for you to answer. One is, when's the last time that the school district had a change in its, its actual structure of, uh, mill levy? Uh, the, the forty six point four, when was the last time that that changed? And, um, and then the other question is that, you know, with enrollment, because our board obviously knows that our enrollment numbers, how, how hard is it to try to figure out a budget with the enrollment variable being so kind of crazy? Cause they, they're hearing about that and our public probably is too. Can you cover that?
So with enrollment, uh, we try to do as much in advance as possible. Uh, Mr. Porres put some early enrollment, uh, uh, methods in place. So we can get some of those numbers in November and December and different things and kind of see how enrollment is going. Uh, I mean, enrollment is the key to driving because we're pretty much providing a service. So we have service personnel out there. So if we don't actually have the clients that provide the service which are our students, we actually have to reduce, you know, the base down, the actual, uh, uh, positions down. So early on, we can know that, you know, we have to actually, if we're certified, we have to notify those persons by May first, if they're classified by June first. After that, we're pretty much just relying on retirements and attrition for the most part. So, uh, with COVID, it was a little different because, like for early childhood, people are keeping their kids at home. Uh, I'm not sure, I know enrollment, it may be down a little bit now. I know it was when I last saw it about two weeks ago. So, uh, yet to be seen where it's going to actually end up at October first. Cycle two is right around the corner, I think. Have to submit that by, I think, October fifteenth or so. Uh, but enrollment is, is, is very critical for all aspects of our budget, so. Because once you pass those dates and notification, if you, people don't retire or you don't have turnover, you pretty much just have that carrying cost for the whole year. Is that what Kenny wanted, wanted to hit, Mr. Por?
I think so. And, and one of the things that Mr. Bailey and, and really our entire staff does that I want you to understand is we're very disciplined. As the year goes on, if, if we do see some enrollment, uh, shrinking, then we, we don't replace staff as they go away. Um, and don't rehire folks. So we're, we're, we're pretty good at that. And over the last several years, we have saved money during the course of the year by just being disciplined of not just rehiring people, knowing that we're going to have to either make reductions or that we have some loss of students. And, and I'll answer my own question on the one other thing, which was, I believe the last time that in.
Oh, I forgot about that one.
Six point four was in nineteen ninety nine, if I'm correct.
That's correct.
And, um, so that was the last time that, that there has been an adjustment on that forty six point four number.
That is, that's correct. It's been over twenty years. So, uh, this is something I shared with you all earlier, it's still a working document. I was preparing it. We have a, a session, I believe, coming up on October eighth, uh, that we're going to be providing some information. I thought it was good for you all to give y'all a little more narrative as far as what we're looking at tonight, some highlights. Um, you know, same stuff I'm pretty much covering right now, but gave you some charts there to kind of look at our sources of funding, where they come from, different things. Hopefully everybody got a chance to review it. It's still kind of in, in draft format. I'm going to be adding a few more things and making sure everything is, is clear. So typically on our work sessions and different things, I try to break it down as much as possible and talk in just layman terms, not in accounting terms and not in anything else. So it's, it's plain to you and plain to the public. I think that's beneficial for both of us, so we have a real understanding, uh, but assessments and different things like that. So just wanted to show you that briefly. But, uh, get to the, the big meat here is the actual, the budget package here, which you all have. So, uh, like I said, I, I fiscal year actually started July first. We actually don't receive our state, uh, allocation, our, uh, actual state aid notice around July thirty first. Uh, some of those federal budgets aren't released to August. So that's why we typically don't have a budget in place July first, because we're still getting those documents we need to formulate the budget, along with looking at those enrollments as well. So if enrollment looks like it's not going to make our projections, you know, we stop on hiring and do a hiring freeze at that point over the summer. So those are all things we're trying to put in place. And this one actually took, we really don't like getting down to the, to the wire like this, but we had several vacant positions out there. We really had to clean up and justify and make sure they were bona fide and really needed, uh, putting the hog into leading a lot of those. So we don't have any fluff in our budget because on this year, we, we, I mean, no year, but especially this year with so many unknowns with COVID. We, I mean, this budget is going to be, it's going to be a year we really have to monitor very, very, very closely. We do monitor closely, but this is going to be one we have to look at pretty much all aspects, because we just don't know what to follow and the one is going to bring with everything, so. But, uh, this is something we call revenue and expenditure summary. It shows pretty much, uh, uh, a two-year picture over there, the eighteen, nineteen, what we budgeted last year and what actually came in, and what we have planned for budget for this up. what actually came in, and what we have planned for budget for this upcoming year. All those pieces I kind of show you on the PowerPoint and on that narrative I sent out there, it's all reflected right here in pretty much two pages. But as you notice here, our current taxes, uh, what we budgeted last year, we budgeted eighty-five point nine million for that part of the tax. We actually got more taxes in. We did a slight increase this year. Uh, we've taken a pretty conservative approach, not really, still not really knowing, never know how our taxes are gonna come in, but not knowing if they're gonna make that ninety-eight percent like we used to get. Uh, we had budgeted sixty-six point six million on this, this tax line there. Uh, and like I said, the taxes came in less than expected for that last quarter. Uh, it came in about four million dollars under. So we've taken a, a lesser approach here. So typically, this would have probably been about sixty-nine million dollars on our projection. But we're about four million down than what we would typically probably project for that period of time to kind of, uh, hopefully have some cushion based on, you know, taxes not coming in on a timely basis, so. Everything else is pretty much, I think we took about inflationary rate of maybe one percent, one and a quarter on some of these other pieces, although we had a three percent tax, uh, appreciation out there. Let me pause. Y'all have any questions?
Kelsey, could you explain to them, um, one of the things, when you talked to me about it, was how the, the tax that comes, the taxes that we receive, why would you worry about a variable? Because, eh, in central Arkansas, there's a housing boom. So what, what's the problem?
So we do have, central Arkansas is, houses are selling really quick now at top value. But we do sell, have some houses that hadn't sold as well. So those are people that not, not selling their houses, but, you know, they might have lost jobs. So they may have visions where they have the land paying of their taxes, different things like that. Uh, so it really businesses, you know, are suffering hospitality in different other places and small business. So they, they're gonna choose between making payroll and paying taxes. You're gonna probably make payroll because that's what keeps you in business, so you can delay your taxes. So those things, you know, kind of, we've taken in consideration there. We typically always are fairly conservative on our approach and not, not getting too aggressive on our, our tax structure and tax revenue collections out there. But had to take a, a little more conservative approach this year, just not knowing how that's gonna play out, so. We're all hopeful that the economy will bounce back, and I'm sure it will, just not knowing how, how this year is gonna be affected, so. Don't ever want to sell, oversell you on anything, so we want to have a realistic budget out there. So if it's gonna be short, we, we know, we can, we have those plans, A and Plan B and Plan C, so we can actually facilitate some kind of resolution to those shortages. But as we go down, our, so our projection basically from last year is actually a little bit less than what we budgeted, uh, for our overall taxes. So our projection is one hundred and sixty-eight point five million for this upcoming year. We have a few taxes that come in just from county sources there. But as we look at our various state sources here, we kind of covered some of those earlier. I guess we covered pretty much all those areas. Uh, this is gonna probably increase a little bit more because of this, what we call state grants, make, uh, magnet funding here. Uh, the state is actually gonna give us money for our National Board certification, but a portion they would typically pay to teachers. We just don't have that budget amount now. It's gonna be a wash, so it comes in that revenue and goes out on expenses. So when we actually get that number, we'll have to actually adjust that. But otherwise, all these other numbers are fairly set here, with the exception of the English language learners, which will be based on ten years' number. So we projected about three thousand students being identified in those areas, so. Questions? So basically, we're projecting about eighty-two million dollars for state revenue coming in. Uh, last year, we actually had a little bit more come in. Uh, that was based on this, this funding portion up here. A portion of that was ESSER money we got in, along with some other, uh, local grants.
A question about possible additional stimulus money that may come in. Is that in, is that coming through the state or is that a federal revenue source that you might?
It, it's, it's gonna be a federal revenue source that's gonna be actually funneled through the state if we get in additional funding. So at that time, we actually, if we get additional funding, we actually budget it out there and do adjustments. But no guarantees right now, so only thing you see in there is what we know we're gonna be getting.
I understand.
For the most part, so, yeah.
I understand.
So I, I hope we get some more, so. So when we're looking at other parts on here, something that throws this off, and a lot of people ask about this, this major transfer here. We have to transfer funds, what's called inter-fund transfer. So we have to transfer funds from our two thousand funds to our one thousand funds to cover our actual expenses in there. We have to transfer funds from our general operating to our debt service. Not additional revenue coming in, it's just funds being transferred within funds. So if you want to just take a, a glimpse at how you want to see what our overall budget is, you can typically just take out this two hundred and ninety-seven million out of the bottom line. We have to show this because we actually are making fund transfers within multiple funds there, but it's not additional revenue coming in. And the same thing from this debt service fund as well. We have to transfer funds from our general operating fund down into our debt service fund to actually make that debt service payment out of fund pool. So, uh, this is gonna be a wash with another expense on, in the back page where we'll get to here shortly. But overall, uh, federal grants, we're looking at about forty-four point one million. A dedicated maintenance and operation, we always keep it separate down there. That's those two meals we talked about earlier, because they're, they're not going into our general operation. They go toward that capital improvement along with, uh, technology refresh. And this includes a, a fund transfer as well. So our actual dedicated maintenance operation, about seven point, uh, seven point seven million dollars. Going to the next page is expenses there. So like for, like I said, on our revenue, we pretty much can't do anything on revenue. It is what it is. We get what we have allocated out there. The expense portion is the portion we can play an active party in as a administration, as a board. Uh, and this is the portion here, the salaries and benefits and different purchase services here. So, uh, just looking at a recap from last year, where we budgeted from nineteen twenty for salaries, we had a hundred and forty-eight million budgeted, uh, actual, we actually came in a little bit more. Uh, and this was a, basically a transfer that we had. We had to transfer some, some of our federal programs up to our operational, because pre-K didn't make all their, the numbers. We had to transfer to cover some out of our SPED funding as well. So typically, you wouldn't see that, but we did have, have some shortages in some of those areas based on reduction of some, especially pre-K on, on last year. So this year, we have budgeted a hundred and forty-seven million. That's our total carrying costs. I think does include some bases out there as well. Uh, so you can, if you notice, it's, it's two million dollars less than we actually ended up last year. It's a little over a million less than what we budgeted last year. We look at benefits, uh, benefits are fairly the same on what we ended up. Our benefits actually went up slightly due to our teacher retirement. We had to add a quarter percent. So teacher retirement is going up a quarter percent for the next two more years. So it was a four-year trend to get up from fourteen percent to a fifteen percent contribution. Purchase services, uh, from budget to where we budgeted this year is down about, uh, two and a half million dollars out, mainly attributable to, to, uh, textbooks, materials, supplies. And these are allocations based on the whole district. So you have, uh, departments and schools that may allocate in different, uh, actual account codes. But we're, we're pretty much on track where we actually, a little bit less than what we actually ended up last year, about a half a million dollars less than budget. And for the most part, everything else is charting as well. So overall, if we were looking at in the same light here, we would be about eight million dollars less than what we had budgeted last year for this overall, about a million dollars, less than a million dollars less than what we came in on actual last year. So a big part we talk about is fund balance. And basically what fund balance, how fund balance is created, that you have more revenue coming in than you had expenses going out. That fund balance is actually used to help cushion those, those, uh, lean years where your revenue projections don't come in or your expenses are more than what you expected out there. So you use that actual reserve, basically rainy day funds or reserves or however you want to call it out there. Uh, it also helps you with, uh, cash flow management. So, you know, our payroll, we're payrolling fifteen hun- fifteen million dollars of payroll, and we only have, you know, a certain amount of money coming in, we can use that, that to help on cash flow needs. Uh, when I, you mentioned, when I, you see this forty-four million up here for our actual federal grants here, that's not money we actually have in hand. It's all on a reimbursable basis. So we have to spend that money and get reimbursed. So on those times where you've heard about the government shutting down and different things, that affects school district quite a bit. So, because we spent that money out there, so we're waiting on reimbursement. So you need to have enough cash flow to keep you from having to actually go out there and borrow money to make payroll and different things like that. And we've been fortunate, we hadn't had to borrow any money, not since I've been here. But, uh, a lot of my people have worked in the district twenty-five to thirty years, in my, some of my directors, and they've seen that what we had to, or we, fund balance was as low as one percent or something like that. But wanted to show you the fund balance, only really fund balance, we have the ability to really do anything with what's called our operating, our federal grants or just our federal grants portion, but our operating fund balance is what we actually have some autonomy with. So based on the budget last year, we had budgeted to end up about twenty-three point nine million dollars. We actually ended up less than that, as you noticed, and we talked about that four million dollar shortfall in our revenue coming in. Uh, we, we always had plans to, to fund the FFNE for Southwest High out of our actual fund balance. And we did some of that as well, about two point seven million last year. So if revenue would have came in, we would have been right there at this projection of the twenty-three point nine. But of course, it didn't, so that's why we're down now. But if you notice here, based on, I know it's another significant drop there, but we have additional FFNE, we have to purchase for Southwest, I had to purchase for Southwest. So you see a drop there along with some, uh, drop in enrollment and different things that we talked about on that revenue sources from our state categorical funding. So it's not, that's why I said we, we really had to take our time this year and, and look at every aspect of those, uh, actual positions that were out there vacant. We didn't want to have any additional expenses out here that wasn't necessary, and some of those may be reduced as they continue to do enrollment and counts and looking at, uh, staffing at various levels and looking at, uh, course loads and class loads and things like that. We just talked about it earlier with HR and Mr. Por, and I know they're getting some additional reports together as well, so. Questions?
Yeah, Kelsey, did, last year at this time, did we anticipate having to dip into the fund balance? Did, did, did we plan for a seven, you know, a six and a half million dollar decrease in the fund balance?
We, we always had plans for about seven to ten million dollars to fund what's called FF, I could say FFNE, furniture fixing and equipment for Southwest. We had, actually had money for our second lien loan to actually pay for the construction, but always in the plan that we were gonna have to contribute some out of the actual operations for that building, for the, just the, the extra stuff that goes in there, all your science stuff and different things like that. But for this year, it really wasn't planned, couldn't foresee this amount right here. And it may be better than this based on collections. Like I said, if collections go back to normal, uh, tax revenue may be up another four million dollars. So that fund balance may not dip as much, you know, it may only be, it may go down to eighteen million or something, but that's based on collections. Things like I said, we can control, we can pretty much control our expenses here for the most part. So it's really typically no surprises in our expenses. And this is considering a, a lot of districts I, and a lot of resumes I've been on, either with the council, great city schools, or CFOs around the, the state. Their major concern is, uh, spending, uh, having to contribute to their actual child nutrition program. Uh, our child nutrition program have about a five million dollar fund balance, so they were able to survive last year, and I think they're gonna be pretty good this year. We are spending quite a bit of capital because we're not, uh, feeding as many students, but we won't have to contribute anything out of operation for child nutrition, so that's a plus as well. Was that me? Somebody not understanding?
Yes, somebody doesn't understand.
This, this is not the prettiest budget this year, but like I entitled the presentation, Uncharted Waters with COVID and, and everything else. So with, you know, we still have declining, some decline in enrollment. We have to address that, that as well, so. All right.
Yeah, give me, if, if you don't mind, I'm just trying to-
Okay. Let me check to see, are there any chat questions, anything? I know there's a lot of information, especially for our new members, and maybe for our existing members who's been on there a while, so it's just a lot to cover. Whatever questions you have, just throw them out there. No questions.
Sure, so, so look at the revenue, if we could look at the revenue for just a second, between the budget of twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and then the actual twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Uh, right, right below, I'm sorry, right above the line, all sources, uh, there's, there's a twelve million dollar discrepancy between what we budgeted for the year and what we actually got. And it's, uh, it looks like it's eight million-ish, eight million on federal grants and four million on dedicated maintenance and operations. What, so the federal grants, is that, is that where we missed on Title One?
Yes, so, so basically, on federal grants is a reimbursable basis. So like, like the forty-four million we have here is based on, that's what allocation we have. So Title One may have an allocation of ten million dollars plus another, say, a two million dollar carryover, a total of twelve million. But in a given year, if they only spend eight million dollars, eight million dollars is all we can book as far as revenue, because that's the only thing we spent. So they still have four million dollars on, on the carryover that rolls over to another year.
Okay.
So the federal, federal grants are based on allocation, so, but it's typically a wash. Uh, we used to get federal money in advance, and there's a few awarded competitive grants. They may send you money in advance, but the Tyler programs are all on a reimbursable basis, so.
Okay, so that's why the make, that's why it appears that this year's budget includes federal grants revenue significant, sixteen million larger than what we actually realized last year, because a lot's gonna be made up from what we didn't get. Is that right?
Yeah, some of it made up from that, along with, uh, the ESSER funds, that CARES PAC funds that we have, about six million, through some of that private school as well. We just got notice on that as well, so it may be some adjustments on the CARES funding as well for the private schools versus our funding allocation too, so.
Okay. What are the dedicated maintenance and operations funds that we were, we were four million dollars short in revenue?
So that's our local tax revenue that comes in as well. So like one meal goes toward, uh, capital improvement, one meal goes toward the, uh, actual refresh of computers. Uh, and a part of that has some transfers in as well, so the transfers were a little bit, uh, less. Uh, typically, that fund is about, produces, each meal produces about three and a half million for each one of those programs in a, a given year. So we were just a little bit short. So some of this nine million point six you see is part of a transfer to transfer from operating to that, that debt, to that fund fire. But for the most part, anytime we have any shortages on our regular current taxes up here, it translates down to our dedicated, because it's tax revenue as well. So for operational, operational capital improvement this year, we're looking at probably about three point five million, what maintenance has ability to do in the emergency requests and different things like that. And it doesn't take much to spend three and a half million dollars on forty-four schools. Which we've already spent a portion of that. Think I've been going about forty-five minutes maybe, or so.
Yeah.
So as, as we look, so this is a summary of everything that's, that's on the following pages here, based on budget over here. So it breaks out everything. So if you had a question about individual accounts, so we try to roll a lot of these things up. There's a lot of different accounts that you can, it rolls up into some of those local taxes and state, uh, programs. Uh, a lot of times, we put it in that state grant, different things. So you can look through here. Only thing on this, and when you're looking at the account code, it doesn't tell you whether it's a, a, a local or state or federal actual, uh, revenue source. You won't be able to tell based on these accounts over here. But this is the same report I typically provide you on a monthly basis. It shows, these are the expenses here as well. One of the big parts we want to look at probably on a monthly basis, wanting to get all the budget and revenue comes in, is called this Detail Changes and Fund Balances. So it shows where our fund balances have changed, reduced, different things. So, uh, you can always look, I'm gonna show you this, and I think we covered this last month as well. Typically, we have a starting balance, and that was called our fund- Uh, you can always look, I'm going to show you this, and I think we covered this last month as well, typically we have a starting balance, and that was called our fund three, our, our. Construction fund, our bond funds, uh, we actually had to zero that out, we have some additional expenditures we're going to have to move out of there, reclass, so. As you're looking through some of these statements here, as some of those account codes change, we actually have to reclass some of those based on those function and account code changes we talked about earlier. Sorry, I'm scrolling, just going back to the top, so. But that's pretty much it for this year.
All right, questions from members of the board? I guess I'll, I'll ask something, heard you mention it, um, I want to, I guess I want to camp out on it for just a second, but how are we anticipating? Our, uh, lower student numbers that we're experiencing this year, uh. In, in, in able, in, in anticipating that our average is going to be much lower, and. That could be a significant hit that we take headed into next year, what are we doing to prepare for that so that maybe the hit next year is a little lower?
Well, those things, we've got to identify those areas where we're overselling, uh, I know they're looking at programs as far as the effectiveness of programs. Some of those supplemental programs, so when you get hit, it depends on, you may just say you lose five hundred students, five hundred students may equate to. Uh, a few million dollars of, uh, of our foundation funding, but it might have been three and reduced students, so reduce your ESA, it may reduce your Title One. ELL students associated with that, it reduce those categorical funding, so depending on the type of student we lose, kind of depend on those funding sources, but. I mean, those are things, once we have the October first numbers come in, we kind of see what, what we have to play with for next year. As far as a whole body student enrollment, make those changes, so you have from fall pretty much to spring to make those adjustments.
Okay.
Those, those are typically tough adjustments when you, you're talking about, you know, reductions and different things, so, but they're just necessary, you know, in this environment, we've been making reductions for. Last, at least seven years or so, eight years.
Kelsey's audio acting up for anybody else?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, it's rather garbled, I can mostly, can mostly understand you, it's just a little distracting.
Is it better now?
No. Um. I guess, I guess I'm. I, I'm concerned about, so we started this year with lower and, it lower enrollment, uh, than. What, whatever that number was in, in the four hundreds, right? Is that right, Mr. Four? And then, and then of those enrolled, we, we have a significant number that we haven't yet made contact with, is that right? So that's what I, that's what I'm especially concerned about, is the double hit there, that if. We have a lower enrollment, which maybe we've already anticipated the lower enrollment, um, I'm not sure. But then, in addition to lower enrollment, we have those that are enrolled, but we haven't made contact with yet, and those are good. I think we have to expect that those are going to hurt our, uh, budget significantly next year, and when you combine those two. Uh, those two numbers, that's a, that's a lot of kids, and we, I mean, seriously, we, I mean, we could be looking at seven or eight hundred kids.
Let me put that kind of into two buckets, uh, for the board, one bucket is with our, our youngest children, and that's where we have made some adjustments already. So our pre-K numbers are down significant, and of course, pre-K brings in a variety of different funding sources that includes. You know, local as well as, uh, state and federal funding. We've already made some adjustments in terms of reducing staffing at that, those sites, because of, uh, the knowledge from a very early time that we. Had less people, you know, enrolling their kids in pre-K, that was a part of the pandemic, and then when we were not given the opportunity to do virtual pre-K. It kind of made it even more dramatic that we lost more kids. We also had, we have less kindergarten, I think that number has, at one time was over three hundred, now I believe we're down around two hundred and fifty. Less kindergarteners than what we would have previously, previously expected. So we're, we're kind of looking at those younger ones that we think that we will recoup those students, come back if the pandemic, you know. Comes to some sort of, of closure, um, or a, a better, better situation. That, that's what we believe, and of course, that's what I think everyone across the state is hoping happens, because we're not alone as a school district in losing those young ones. The problem that Mr. Wood is also bringing up is that we have well over four hundred students who are disengaged with us right now. And they might even got a laptop, um, from us, uh, this fall. They may not have got a laptop, but we are having, uh, a really challenging time tracking those young people down, and I promise you, our staff is making calls. I've talked to teachers who've made calls, I know that attendance clerks have made calls, counselors have made calls. Um, so we are trying to track those, those students down, but that's the most frustrating one of just how many of those. Young people that, that are out there that are saying they're going to, uh, especially go into a virtual setting that we, we have, we're not getting in regular contact, and. Come September thirtieth, we will be dropping those students, now that may cause a reaction for them to. Be serious all of a sudden and come back into our school system, uh, and we have to re-enroll them, but I promise you, we're working on it, but Mr. Wood's comment. Of, you know, shrinking enrollments, think of it kind of in two groups, one is the, the, the ones that are the youngest children. And then the second one is the group that we can't get engaged right now that are seeking virtual. Have I captured that pretty correctly, um, Mr. Bailey, in your way you've looked at it?
Exactly, yeah.
You're still garbled.
Well. I, I guess as, as we, uh, as we go through this year, uh, you know, Uncharted Waters is probably a good description. You know, making the necessary, uh, adjustments even in October and November of this year to adjust for lower. Lower enrollment and to, to help, uh, with the impact that we're going to have next year this time.
Can I interrupt you on that?
Yeah.
Because one of the things I failed to mention, especially about the knowledge that we knew that some of our youngest children weren't showing up. Is that we did make an adjustment, uh, in the months of July and August, and we moved some of our pre-K staffing. Out of the pre-K environment to go fill gaps that we had in the K-five environment, so we did already make a significant adjustment in staffing. And I give, uh, Darian Smith and Robert Robinson and Renee Kovacs a lot of credit for that, because, um, that was a, a cost savings, you know, we just didn't keep hiring people at K-five, we actually moved. Staff knowing that our pre-K numbers were going to be lower and tried to make adjustments there already. And one other example would be that our, our ALA program, which is actually, uh, very low right now, we've also reassigned staff. From that environment, because, you know, we're not having the major discipline issues and problems, that's one of the positives about having smaller enrollments. So we are not having students, uh, moved into the ALA environment, um, and. We have moved our ALA staff up into the secondary schools in particular to fill in some of those gaps, so. That would be a really good examples of some adjustments that we're making internally, um, already this fall.
Audio better now?
Yeah, it is, yeah, very good. Anyone, anyone else have any questions or comments about, uh, the budget presentation?
No.
I, I can just tell you, COVID hit us kind of at the worst time. Uh, with pre-K, because at that point, it wasn't quite as bad, we did close schools in March, but we still had those, those students there, but. For the upcoming enrollment, it was too late to really make reductions, so we actually dispersed those teachers and aides around the district, uh, so we are utilizing them. As well, but just kind of hit, hit at the wrong time for reduction, so typically you would have had those reductions planned in the fall, coming into spring and not. Having to do it in the summertime, so right now we're just really at the, at attrition and retirement, so as those people are retired and attrition has happened, we just hadn't replaced a lot of them, so.
Um, I don't have necessarily, I guess, a question about the numbers, um. But maybe more of a question about what's behind the numbers, and if this is not appropriate for the setting, um, you can let me know, but. You know, it sounds like enrollment numbers have not just fallen off this year with COVID, but it's been kind of occurring, and. So my question is, um, do we know where these kids are going and, uh, or have a sense of. Why they're leaving, because just, I mean, yes, COVID hit this school district, COVID obviously hit the country, um, but it sounds like this was kind of a. Issue that was starting beforehand, and so just in terms of thinking about. The why behind the numbers, or do we, do we understand that, and is there anything we're doing to try to kind of mitigate that?
I'll, I'll start, and then Mr. Bailey may have to, would like to add, but, you know, what's interesting, uh, Dr. Jones, is that we, we actually were anticipating a very good year for enrollment. Mrs. Klubak in, in, right when kind of the pandemic began, that we were seeing some very positive signs, some of those signs have held true, so for example. In, in Cloverdale's registration, they are up eighty students, Henderson is up eighty students. But I would also be less than honest if I didn't tell you that some of those, uh, numbers at Cloverdale and Henderson, there's also. A group of young people within those two schools that also haven't shown up in the virtual world. So, um, you know, we were really pleased with secondary numbers, um, in terms of how that looked. Um, and the, the, the younger ones, we, we could sense there was a problem on that early, um, especially at the pre-K. We got a little bit surprised in August, at least I was surprised, if I remember right, and it was that month where the kindergarten became a reality, like, whoa, the kindergarten kids aren't here. Um, so I don't know if I'm totally answering your question, i- it felt like some of our enrollment trends, in other words, were about ready to, to flatten. Um, and, and we certainly had better numbers last year in terms of a loss than the previous two years, so we, we kind of felt we were on a, on a better track, and. A part of that also is Southwest High has been a tremendous help, um, you know, that investment, again, making investments in, in some structures, and. You know, even, I'd want to go back into the, the extending of debt, you know, if we get to go build a new McCullin, uh, get rid of Cloverdale. That could help our enrollment down in the Southwest, it, it, the, remember, we always said seventeen hundred and about fifty is what we anticipated? We have registered right now, the last number, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Bailey, I think was around nineteen hundred for Southwest, so our numbers have, have jumped there. Um, we also came in a little bit higher at the West School of Innovation than I anticipated, I give Ms. Heatherly a lot of credit, now it's not a tremendous jump. But we, we were at sixty last year, and we doubled the number, and that was during a pandemic, and at one time, her number had dropped down to about. Um, forty-five to fifty, right as Mr. Pickering was leaving, and she really did a good job to get up to a hundred and twenty. And we think there's a lot to market there, we think there's a lot to market at, at Hall, so I, I may be given too broad of an answer to your question, um. But ask, keep asking Dr. Jones if I didn't address things properly.
No, I think that was helpful, um, so maybe, you know, I'm, my perception of kind of what was happening may have been a little bit off, because it sounds like. Um, you know, uh, COVID did hit here a little more disproportionately, for lack of a better term, than. Um, uh, you know, what had been going on before, because it sounds like things had been kind of trending perhaps in the right direction. Pre-COVID, so.
And we know we've lost some students to charter schools and to private schools, and some of them just moved out the district, but some, that was a bonus for this year that I just hadn't seen in the past, we are about two hundred. Overall for middle school, so I mean, we typically have had a leak in our middle school, but overall, we're up two hundred enrolled in our middle school, at sixth through eighth grade. Eighth grade was, I think, up about a hundred and ninety-five for the most part, so that continues the trend, you know, our high schools will get those students, so. It's really been in the elementary where we've seen the loss in the, in the, in the early childhood, so that's a positive, so I know we've. Worked hard to try to get our, our middle school levelized and stop the bleed when them coming into middle school or leaving out, so.
So, so you're saying that this, middle schools and secondary, or the high schools. Have, uh, middle schools have increased, high schools are, have moderated, but the elementary schools are, are the ones that we see the decrease in, right?
Right now, yeah, high schools actually up as well, so all, I think, for the most part, they may be awash with high schools now, but just looking at the past numbers that I was able to see. And I don't know, I know we have the census this year as well, so we may be able to see some trends, it may not be as many kids still in our intended zone, so.
I just want to bring up one more thing, though, uh, that hopefully, again, what Mr. Bailey and I represent are, when we say that middle school's up and high school's up, those are the ones that we had enrolled.
Oh, yeah.
Still a reality out there that Mr. Wood brought up that I don't want to still lose sight of, that we still have a large group of young people that are disengaged in accessing the. The virtual learning environment that we're struggling with and, and multiple other districts are as well.
But typically enrollment is down for middle school, so it's positive, although it may not be relative yet.
Yeah, Dr. Jones, you bring up, you've brought up a very good topic, we could probably have a whole meeting on, on this, this particular topic, it's extremely relevant, and. Um, we've, you know, that is probably a, a tall task for the next board that, that takes over at the beginning of the year to, to really set. Set their hand to the work of turning the trend regarding enrollment, because we got to, we got to attract more families, you know, we got to, we got to attract, we got to, we got to win people's trust, and. I do, I do hate the, the way the pandemic has, especially this thing, this disengaged student thing, I'm very concerned about that, when you add that to our. Lower enrollment numbers, I'm very concerned about what that's going to mean for, uh, for this time next year when we're trying to budget, but. Hope, uh, you know what, I mean, we have the best, uh, Sand, Sandrika, I'm going to pat Kelsey on the back in front of you. We have the best CFO in Arkansas in our school district, and, uh, his team manages our money very, very well. And, uh, they, they watch this stuff, nothing catches them off guard, next, the end of next summer isn't going to catch them off guard either. But the community does need to know these things, these can't be things that just exist, and Kelsey and, uh, Mr. Poor's head, uh, the, the community needs to be prepared for these discussions. Uh, and that's why we, that's why we have them here. Um, uh, you know, I think we'd be remiss if, if we didn't make a focus that I, I, I believe it was last year, it might have been a year and a half ago that our. Teachers got a bonus.
We brought them up to thirty-six thousand, and everybody, they were over thirty-six thousand, I think they got eleven thirty-five, so. That's another thing we had to fund this year as well, about two point six million.
Yeah, we're overworking them right now, and, uh, whatever, whatever we can do, you know, as soon as possible to just. Give them the smallest thank you of one day's pay, you know, I brought this up in August with regard to. That day off that we, you know, gave them in their contracts in the spring, that, the day off, uh, the day before school was supposed to start, but. There was not a teacher in this city that got to take that day off, in fact, they probably had to work a three-day weekend. Um, and I know y'all know that, I just think that it's important, uh, for us to keep that in front of you, that the first opportunity we have to tell them thank you. Um, I think we, we need to make that a priority as soon as possible. Um, so please, please keep your eye to that, uh, I was, I was, you know, sitting here looking at. Looking at what I can do, I mean, it's hard, budgets are hard, um, but, but that has to be a priority, and we've, we've got to, we've got to make that a priority to, to. Wedge that into our operations this year.
If I could, Mr. Wood, I, I know you're, what you're proposing, but I, I do want to just highlight something that Kelsey said for our community and. For, uh, your fellow board members, is that, you know, when the governor provided additional funding for teacher salaries to bump us up to thirty-six thousand. That is, you know, that's a one-time gift to move us up, but then it also sets up another trajectory. But then it also sets up another trajectory of us, as Mr. Bailey just said, and I think he mentioned 2 point some million dollars additional funding to cover the next step up. So, you know, again, when you look at all the different factors of what we've gone through, and I'm telling you, there are districts who also receive that money, you know, in the last year or two, that are struggling like crazy trying to figure out how to deal with it because they, they don't have that long-term plan. Now, we're not, obviously, we're just holding, we're holding on, okay? We're not, we're not knocking out of the park, but we're staying even, more or less, with our responsibility to, to cover that, and there are other districts that are really struggling.
Any other questions or comments?
I have one question, or maybe it's a comment or combination between question and comment. The people, the parents in the community, especially the Latino community, they are very worried about their attendance of the schools, and sometimes they are very worried about their struggle with the internet or with the devices. And the kids are not able to make their work. One day they can make it, and the next day don't. And they are worried about that affect their attendance and have a consequences of this failure of their attendance.
Well, and this is a good question because we can turn it into a financial question as well, and, and, and also kind of a procurement process as well as an instructional thing. So I'll start with, maybe shift it over to Mr. Bailey to cover the other part of it. So thank you, Ms. Chivriya, the, on the instructional thing, you know, what we're, we've, one thing that we want everyone to hear right off the bat is that we have organized, and we were able to share this last week as well, that there now are stakeholder user groups that allows help and support, whether it's on technology needs or instructional things that are, they're having challenges with. So every stakeholder, students, parents, and staff have specialized areas that they can go to, and that can be found on our website. And if anybody's having trouble accessing it, they can contact me directly or Ms. Smith so that we can get them the appropriate level of support for their principal. Second is that even like we did testing last week, and initially I was told that our NWEA testing was not working well for parents, and I'm like, oh, boy, what did we do? You know, I initially thought about it being us, and that wasn't the case at all. It was a national issue where that entire system didn't work quite right, and parents really struggled then, even though they were being genuine, trying to do their assessments. So we've had issues that are national, we've had state issues, like Kelsey not being able to do e-finance for three days, and then we have had our own local problems. So it, it's one of those that we have to continue to work together, to try to work through those things and not let people get frustrated, but let them feel like there's a source of help. Along with that, I think a part of your question also kind of falls into then expenditures. And Kelsey can give a quick recap of this, just as a reminder to the community, that we have purchased hotspots. Our first 500 were the ones that came in from the governor, that helps with everyone getting broadband and data plans. We had 500 come in from the governor, but we have an additional, is it 3,000 more hotspots on its way?
I believe we actually got, I ordered in, we ordered additional 2,500, and I believe Dr. O'Wai ordered
So it'd be 3,500.
Another thousand.
Yeah, 3,500.
4,000 total.
Yeah, 500 from the governor, and then 3,500 that, that we purchased. And out of that 3,500, 1,000 was in partnership with the city. So those are still tools that are yet to come. We still have a large laptop delivery as well. All of our virtual learners should have devices right now, but some of our in-school folks do not have devices. So as an example, when Southwest pivoted to a virtual learning for all students, we had to get devices into those kids' hands, that was 1,000 kids that we needed to get devices to. We were able to pivot and get those devices down there within less than two days in order to serve that community. So we had to do a little bit of a pivot with Parkview as we moved to in-person learning there. Give you another example, today we went to virtual learning for Gibbs Magnet, but we didn't have to do that, any pivoting, because their kids already had the devices. So, you know, it depends on the school as to where, whether in-person learning students have devices. A large number of our schools did not, and those numbers, the computers are still coming. So we still have a large set of devices on its way. Anything to add to that, Kelsey?
Thank you pretty much for covering, so we still are waiting about 4,200 Chromebooks from the district level and probably another few hundred that the schools actually order. So I think at the end of this, about probably by the end of this semester, we'll be totally one-to-one throughout the district. So this budget actually supports a total one-to-one initiative as well, so. I would say if that parent, I would tell that parent to make sure they're contacting their school counselor, to let them know that they're having some issues. And I mean, technology issues are major, you can even notice me tonight, I'm, I'm having to move around to make sure I'm in close proximity to AP, so.
Yeah, because some parents try, in the beginning of the school year, some parents try to work with their own devices.
Yeah.
So that, that's why they return to the school and say, hey, we need the devices. And now they are doing better, so thank you so much, thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
I do have one comment, although y'all are voting on the budget tonight, this is not a, a, something written in stone. It's not a stationary document, it's a living document. So as we go throughout the year, you know, adjustments have to be made, so we're always looking at budget. Although this is a formal process, budget never ends for our office. And as a board, it'll never end for you all as well, because you'll get various requests and various initiatives we have to address constantly, so the financial part continues to go. So, but this is just a culmination of all the things we've kinda discussed over the year and for this year to get started and going, so. And thank you for your kind words as well, Mr. Wood, and along with my staff as well, so.
Yeah, well, I, I know that I, I speak for, I, I don't think I'm speaking out of turn when I say I'm speaking for everyone there. I think everyone respects your work tremendously. Thank you and your team for, for what y'all do, you do a very good job. Okay, with no more comments or questions from members of the board then, I think it would be appropriate for us to entertain a motion with regard to the, recommending the budget approval.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move that we accept the proposed budget for Little Rock School District 2020 to 2021.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second? Okay. Any discussion on the motion from anyone? All right, hearing none, then those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Okay, the budget will be recommended then to the commissioner for approval.
Thank y'all for your support.
Yeah, thank you, Kelsey, for all your work. Brings us to the board comments section of the meeting tonight, any comments from members of the board? Okay, before we go too far, I do wanna remind everybody that we have some, some background check hearings that we need to conduct after we adjourn the public portion of this meeting. I say we do that if someone would like to make a motion with, how should we handle that, Mr. Poor? Move, move to adjourn the public portion and end the live feed, is that how we'll do that?
That is, I think, the correct way to do it.
Okay, but I haven't, I haven't received any Zoom instructions for us to move to a different Zoom to do the background check hearings, so I think that we will remain in this Zoom, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, then, is there a motion to adjourn the?
Oh, it's all right, that's, there, there is another Zoom link that I believe Mrs. Eastern sent out this morning.
Okay, I apologize if I overlooked that, give me just a second, I will, let's make sure before everybody starts hopping off. Okay, it looks like there is. It looks like Jordan sent us a, an email at 10:49 this morning, so everyone go look for that. Okay, great, well then, if, if there, is there a motion from a member of the board to adjourn this public meeting and move to the background check hearings?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Okay, motion is second, then, without an objection, we'll adjourn this meeting, thank you, everyone.